Good evening. I would call to order the regular meeting of the Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission here on Wednesday, April 13th, 2022. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Van Buren is here. Commissioner Sharp.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yep.
Commissioner Scales.
Here.
Commissioner LaVoy.
Here.
Commissioner Clemmons.
Here.
And Chairman Carmichael. We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. Note that the village attorney is still absent at this point. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And while I have everyone standing, anyone who gives testimony before the commission has to be sworn in. So would you raise your right hand and swear that all the testimony you give will be the truth and the whole truth? Good. Good evening, John.
Evening.
And a reminder, please, everyone silence your cell phones and electronic devices. Also, anyone who gives testimony is required to sign in with their name and contact. We have sign in out in the hallway and at the podium. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the March 9th, 2022, regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion Clemmons.
Second LaVoy.
Discussion on the minutes?
The minutes that I received said draft on them.
Good point.
I imagine that'll get removed once it gets approved.
Yeah.
All right. Noted. We have a roll call, please.
Excuse me. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren says yes, and Chairman Carmichael.
Yes. And it's approved. Next item is open forum. This is an opportunity for anyone present if they wish to speak on, address any subject about the village that is not on tonight's agenda. This is your chance. And seeing, sir?
I would just like to thank the police department.
Would you come to the podium, sir?
I'd just like to thank the village's police department on their handling of the car thefts by BMW. Hopefully that'll keep the thieves out of our town. And, you know, we've got dealerships in all villages in Chicago, and I think they handled it well, and hopefully they'll stay out. But kudos to your police department. They've always done a great job and continue to. So, thank you.
Thank you for making the point, and I think there's a lot of agreement in the community about that. It was, it was a very well performed and very professional. Next item is a review of our public hearing procedures. First, before the board, the applicant will come, be introduced, and present his or her petition. And secondly, our village staff will make comments and, and questions. Of course, the petitioner can respond to those. And again, we see we have the village attorney with us tonight for any consultation that way. And then the, the public gets to weigh in with, with their comments and questions for the petitioner and, and followed by the board, the commissioners. And finally, the commissioners vote. I would remind everyone that this commission is, is a recommending commission, that the village board has the final say after our recommendations. Under new business, before we get started, we'd like to recognize two of our commissioners who have served faithfully for us. And to assist us with that, we have village mayor Ron Gunter and village manager Steve May. Would you come forward, sir?
Usually good to stand here, but thank you. This is, like I'm walking in and I told the manager, this is where the work gets done. And here with this group, I've complimented the entire planning and zoning through the years that all the hard lifting is done here, and you weed it out, you do a lot of the fact finding, and when it comes to us, pretty much is thorough, very thorough, and there's little we need to do. So again, I want to thank the entire board. But tonight, we have two commissioners that are leaving us, one for family reason, the other one because something about Florida, but.
I've got two plats. I'll jump all of the individuals.
I do have to, even though this is the mayor's appointment, since I've been mayor, I've taken the opportunity to allow a team to select these individuals. And I think everyone here, maybe but Wally and Craig, were here before me, but everybody else we've, the team meets them, evaluates them, and recommends them to the planning and zoning. And both of these individuals went through that. And the first one, I want to, Village Westmont honors Allison Clemmons, member of the Village Planning and Zoning Commission 2020 to 2022, in recognition of the dedicated service to the community, and signed by myself. So Allison, come on up. And Allison wants to say so.
I just want to thank everyone. Working with all of you has been wonderful. You know, I'm sad, but I'm happy. You know, also, Florida is warm. I'll still be going back and forth every month because of business, but I'm so happy that you did choose, chose me in the first place. And thank you. I just really appreciate it.
Yes.
And I also like to recognize Thomas Sharp. He's been a member since 2015 to 2022. And again, the Village of Westmont honors Thomas Sharp, member of the Village Planning and Zoning Commission from 2015 to 2022, in recognition of his dedicated service to community. It's again, is signed by myself, Ronald J. Gunter, Mayor. So Thomas, come on up.
Joe just informed me before the meeting that I apparently signed up in April of 2015, and now I'm leaving in April. I didn't know that. I didn't know, I forgot when I had joined. I want to say thanks also for being given the chance to be on this board. When I bought a house in Westmont, my next move shortly thereafter was to call the village and ask, how can I volunteer? Where is there a need in this village? I had no idea it would be planning and zoning. And I'm, by nature, kind of a timid guy. I hate being in places where I'm not confident with my skill set. But even though I had been part of planning and zoning commissions before as a applicant, I, I felt uncomfortable. But I want to say that it has been such a rewarding experience, and I've had all of you to thank. The staff has been great. I would encourage anyone that is thinking about it to step up and give it a try, because everyone around this table will help you out and, and answer any questions that you have, and it's a very rewarding experience. So I want to say thanks again, and maybe I'll be back someday.
Again, I just want to compliment the board. I think Thomas said it right. This is a great group, a team that works together, and I can't say more for the staff. They've done a tremendous job. And Joe is back. Left for a while, but now he's back and he's doing a tremendous job. So again, thank you. I want to thank P&amp;Z for all your effort and what you do to make our life a lot easier and the residents. I mean, you go through all the hard stuff, and when we get it, it's pretty well worked out. So appreciate it. Again, congratulations to Allison, Tom. We have two new commissioners be sworn in on April 21st at the village board meeting. They'll take over May. Both of those went through the selection process that we used. The names? Not yet, until they, until they're sworn in. But they'll be sworn in at the village board meeting next week, and then they'll take over at the May meeting. So again, thank the entire commission. Congratulations are too outgoing. So thank you.
But before you leave, we have some more work for you. And starting under new business, PCC 128-2020, a request from Walter Veselinovich and Rose Development Corporation regarding the property at 413 North Cass for the following: A site and landscaping plan approval for the construction of a two-unit, single-family, semi-detached dwelling in the R4 General Residence District. Sir, good evening.
My name is Walter Veselinovich. I'm at Rose Development. I'm going to give you a little background on this property, and so that you guys know what happened here. We purchased this property in 2004. I have been in construction business right out of college, '78, forty-three years this year. And we have been working in Westmont for past 25 to 30 years. And I see a couple people that I recognized from before. Appreciate what you guys are doing. The reason this, we bought this property, we, at that time, we, we just had developed two condo buildings on Cass. First building was 511 North Cass. And then we got approved and we were developing 417 North Cass, which is a building right across from the library, Prairie Pet, I believe. And we were trying to acquire, because at that time, the villages, village was enthused about doing that kind of stuff because they wanted to increase density, population, so to help the local businesses downtown and bring more people to downtown. So we were encouraged and we were, because, so we bought this property because it became, came on a sale. And then we were trying to acquire some more properties to the south and to the north. To the north, there was just one same-sized property as this, which is a accounting firm, I believe. I don't know the exact address, but I would assume it was 415 North Cass. To the south, you have the medical, the house, which was medical office for the dentist, and her husband is a medical doctor. And they bought work out of there, and they, so we approached both of these people to try to possibly put a project together and do something greater, on a greater scale. We have done a bunch of things in town. Just to give you an example, my company has developed Rose Hill Estates, which is a twenty-home subdivision. We have done the Vermont Town Homes, fourteen, and then we added four more units. We have done number of houses, a number of duplexes in town, so probably altogether, probably approaching about hundred, hundred units. And so we wanted to do something really nice. And the people to the north, the accounting firm, they were not open to doing anything. And they were not approachable at all. They were not interested in doing anything. The people to the south, the doctors, husband and wife, they were very nice, but they said the purpose they bought that property was, and they had a small house, they were starting out their practices, and they wanted to develop it, and then they wanted to build a medical center for them, and possibly some additional space to lease to other doctors. However, I remember in 2004, and before that, that area was, I believe, zoned office research. I know you would not remember that, I think, Dusty. I know you were here at that time. And then I think that the, the village wanted to get a little more density, and they changed the zoning to multifamily. And so they basically said we were not ready to sell. They wanted to really, in the next couple of years, possibly go to the city, and they thought they would be able to get a, to be still approved to do their medical building. And, but they were not open to the idea. And this, when we bought the building, there was a single-family home, not in a good shape. And there was a painting company there for years, so they stayed as our tenants. And because we were stuck with the building now, with that property. So basically, we never increased their rents for fifteen years. They were wonderful people. A couple times, we were told by city to do some improvements. Once we spent about $10,000, another time we spent about $15,000, new roof, new garrets, new, some stuff repaired, foundations, whatever. So basically, we were just waiting to, we were trying to do something more. Then we were trying to approach these people again if they want to sell. Not numerous times. The gentleman to the north, the accounting firm, is no way, you can't deal with him. And then to the south, they were open to it, and they wanted to do something, possibly to incorporate, they were even thinking, how about if we buy your property and we want to do a medical building? So at that time, we came to the city, they asked me to help them with that, so, because of my experience. So I came to the city, and then we went and saw the, at that time, the, the people who were in charge. And they told us that they really didn't want a building, a commercial building, office building there. They want to see units. But possibly, they would consider if, if the building was connected, so it's a combination, building with offices and apartments or, or townhomes or something like that. So we went and worked something out. So we designed like four, four units, I believe, in the back, townhomes and connected with the courtyard. So the front would be like a medical building, and then it would have its own driveway with a gate for the four townhomes in the rear. Because when we put all those properties together, it would be substantial amount of land. I don't remember. I think.
That was the two-south property.
The property, not one property south, but.
Yes.
One property south is, I think, three times as big as our property. So it would be like over 200-foot frontage and about almost 300-foot depth. And then the people next to it was a landscape company. They were not interested in selling, so they, we couldn't go anywhere south further. So basically, we were told that, we submitted, we, we met with the board that you guys have, the business board, it goes before the planning and zoning.
Economic development.
Economic development. And we were kind of surprised because there was really resistance to it. So they just stopped pursuing it, and nothing happened out of it. And then when we were always talking to a doctor, saying, oh, what are you going to do, this and that? They said, they still wanted to, to, to stay there and operate the business, but they were working on a really terrible situation there. It's only about 800 square-foot home. And they finished the basement, so they were using both, but they really are cramped, and they needed more space. And then they said, listen, we're getting older. Our kids are out of the, we don't need anymore. So I don't know, we, we don't want to retire. We don't want to change. We can't find nothing. So, so that just, I made a long story, but I want you to really know that we tried extremely, extremely hard to put a couple properties together and do something right. Then the economy went to hell, 2007 to 12. We were thinking, what are we going to do? You know, and we approached the mayor a couple times or whatever, the board, and we, not board, we never came to official, to anybody, but we're saying, what can we do? And then they approached, they approved the townhomes across the street. I don't know the name of the townhome development. So basically, according to the previous codes that I was told, we were able to do like 3.2 or 3.4 units, and that's parcel, because it's 52 by 298. And, but they approved across the same square footage, so we should have been able to do four units, two duplexes. And that's what you thought we were going to do. But it wasn't the right time to do it. The economy was terrible. So then we came in and I said, no, now things change. Now you can do maybe three, maybe two. So this has been going on for a year and a half, or over a year, for sure. I think December. And we were very patient, but there was changes in the administration here and the building department. So we were making, getting all kinds of different, different things, and we would try to comply, and we couldn't get it done. So basically, right now, we just said, let's get it done, do two beautiful, two beautiful high-end townhomes, which are attached, single-family homes, basically. So our lot, even though it sounds like 52 feet, is not wide, but that's a lot that was there. And the, and we have twice the square footage of land per unit as the townhomes that were approved across the street. I just want to clarify, so you guys realize that we have plenty of room there to satisfy everything. So these people who are by, they're going to be far away from the street. They're going to be able to get in and get out. They're going to have enough guest parking. We exceeding our, I believe, parking requirements. So we tried, we were talking to the staff, and Joe has been extremely helpful. And we wanted to make sure that everybody's happy, and we want to make sure that the village is happy with the project. So finally, we came up with this. I don't know if you had a chance to go through it, but basically, we're going to be putting up two units, one duplex building, and we're providing, I think we're meeting all the requirements. And they're going to be really nice quality, like we always do nice quality. And we just, when I, when I, you know, because we, we decided, what happened is, even though we put in like $30,000 in a five-year period into the building, and then the fire department came in, they want to do this, do this, do that, another $15,000, $20,000, so this is never-ending battle. You know, this building is not in good shape. There's no, no way keeping it, you know, unless you put huge amount of money. So that's the reason we asked the painters to move out, and we asked for demo permit and took the building down, because it was really unsightly. And we wanted to, and we were trying to move as fast as possible through process, but it took us this long. But we are now willing and able to get it done and get it going and build a beautiful, we still think it's a great location because it's really still considered to walk, to train, et cetera. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. I think you have all the information here, if you went through it. But if you want me to go through the whole thing, I'd be happy to do it. But if you have it, I think I'll be.
I would suggest we just go to staff.
Thank you so much. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that I, that you might have. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll, I'll try to quickly summarize what Walter was, the applicant was trying to say is, is, so this, if, if he took anything away from what he was trying to explain, this is a unique lot. It's very narrow. It's only 51 feet wide. However, it is about 300 feet deep. So where, where he was trying to explain in terms of density and references to across the street, what he was trying to express, that it's still a 15,000-foot lot. It's just trying to build on a 51-foot wide lot, has constraints. It's not easy to do. And now I'm going to take you to planning school. I'm sorry for the people that, this is their last meeting, but I'm going to take you to planning school for a second. So this, this is a good test of planning theory. So in this case, the property is zoned R4, which basically is multifamily. So it allows single-family up through multifamily. As he explained, there have been some rezonings over time. I can't give you the complete history on that, but at this point in time, it is zoned R4, which indicates that multifamily is appropriate on the lot. However, when you look at multifamily and how many units can be permitted on the lot, we have a whole matrix of how many bedrooms are in the unit, what kind of unit is it, because in this case, we consider it single-family, semi-detached, was, has its own definition. And so, so we have to analyze the lot for what it is and figure out how many units are there. The, the planning theory test is, the comprehensive plan actually shows this entire stretch of area as business or commercial. So as you know, we typically like to quote what the comprehensive plan states should be developed on this. And in a perfect world, what it is zoned always matches what the comprehensive plan anticipates there. A good example was the case we had last month regarding the, the golf course. They want to do something different than what the comprehensive plan states, and we, we've said, well, you need a comprehensive plan amendment in anticipation of a rezoning to something new. In this case, we don't require a comprehensive plan amendment because there are inherent rights in what the zoning allows, which is basically that multifamily. So it's just this odd juxtaposition where the comprehensive plan is saying one thing, the zoning is saying another. The site constraints on what you can build is a whole other chapter in what can be done. So hopefully, that gets you to a good place in understanding of what's being proposed here. So the applicant didn't indicate that in a perfect world, developing on this lot would have been better if he could have acquired other lots. And I think staff agrees with that. However, what he is trying to do, because he's not able to acquire properties nearby and do a larger project, is build what he can on this lot. So the first thing I want, want to emphasize is, if you look at the case number, this case number was dated in 2020. So he's been working for a year and a half or two years with staff. So he has been very amenable to what staff has been giving him in terms of feedback. And there's been a lot of design and redesign to try to make it fit, try to make setbacks work, try to make density work, try to make FAR work, ensure that stormwater rules were abided by and such. And based on, I did a complete table in here based on the setbacks and parking requirements and all the requirements that we have on this type of project, and he meets all of them. However, it is still a narrow site that creates a very narrow footprint for a building and constraints in getting back into the garages that he's providing. And there's no escaping that. And so whether you want to discuss that with the applicant or not, I'm sure it's something that he's ready to discuss. But in general, this is a site and landscape plan review. There are no variances requested. So he meets all of the minimums for code. In terms of stormwater, it's not required to do stormwater detention. We're treating this like a typical duplex. He is required to do a best management practices. So basically, some water filtration requirements. He does exceed the parking that is required. There are four additional parking spaces in addition to the two parking spaces in the garage. There's not a lot of excess. And because of being on Cass Avenue where there's not on-street parking, it does create a difficulty if additional parking is needed. I'll stop there. I'm sure there will be lots of questions, and we can answer the questions as they arise.
Can I just add a couple things? Thank you so much, Joe, and Joe has been wonderful to work with. First of all, I want to tell you that we were, we checked with, I think the village checked with Mrs. Zemanek's office, that this is a legal lot to build on. Am I correct?
Correct.
Grandfather wins. So basically, and I just want to tell you, the lot is like 51.9 in, 51 feet, I believe eight, nine inches width, whatever. It's 51, 52 is relevant. It's all, you know, what we used to. And I'm not saying I want to change the density to make, we're not trying to make best match cash. I've built a lot of buildings in Chicago. Chicago lots are 24, 25 feet by 125. This is so much bigger. You know, you know, so I'm saying, so there's, everything works. We have, you're required to have, I like to think, 20, 22 feet for your, when you come out of the garage to, for nice turnaround.
24 feet, so.
We have 24 feet. So we.
I think you have 26.
We did. We exceeded. So everything now work fine. We came all the way back. There isn't much traffic there. There's only two units. What, because of the, you can't have two cars passing at the same time, but it's only two units in there. So you might, when you come approach Cass, but we made it a little bit deeper, so give people. Cass, but we made it a little bit deeper, so give people, so they can see each other perfectly. So that was only concern really because of safety, et cetera, and traffic. So they're gonna be able to see people on Cass and everything, and they'll be able to get in. And it's still fourteen feet wide, I believe, at the beginning. Am I correct, Joe?
Yes, I believe so.
So it's fourteen feet. So even if they, you know, they could really pass by, pushing, you know, a little bit aside, but really one, there isn't going to be that much traffic. And we exceed all the parking requirements. Yes, if there's a party, but these are townhomes, they're not big houses, they would have to park another street and walk over. They're gonna have twenty people over or something, but they still have plenty, you know, exceed the parking requirement. So we did the best we could. When we bought the property, we paid premium. We're gonna actually lose money on this, on this deal. We cared for so long and everything, but it's irrelevant. I'm not crying about it. I'm just giving an idea because at that time, we thought we could do twelve units by buying another piece next to it same size. And we could do, that's, two of these pieces are the size of the four-seventeen North Cass, which we built, which is twelve-unit building, four-story, four-story tall. So it's gonna, it's gonna fit in the neighborhood beautifully. It's gonna be high quality. We always did great job, great quality. I don't believe you ever had any problems with us. And we've been around a long time. And I think, you know, we just like to develop it. And appreciate your assistance. And we're trying to meet everything, everything possible.
Is there anyone from the public who would care to address this issue? Seeing none, let's go to the commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Van Buren, would you like to start?
Yeah, I went over and looked at it. And it's just such a small frontage. And in order to get a drive-by and to get in the garage, it's very difficult. You've met, as Joe said, you've met all minimal, minimally, but you did meet all the requirements to the extent that there's no, no variations requested. My first thought was, why didn't you come with two lot, three lots and put in a nice big building? But you've explained why that wasn't possible. I also went over and drove over to the development you did of similar development on Sixty-third and Fairview.
Yes, sir.
At sixty-three twenty-five and sixty-three twenty-seven.
Yes, sir.
And you had a similar circumstance there. I think you had a little bit more width to work with than.
I don't recall exactly, but we got four units on that site.
Yeah, but.
It's a similar sized site.
But you got, you, you had the width. You could get, you know, if you had more width, you could probably do more with this one too.
Right.
The width is.
But I want to point out one more thing to you, trustee Van Buren. The requirement to get in, into garage is twenty-four feet, and we are twenty-six feet. So we exceed that. I don't think it's anybody who is a, who has a driver's license should be able to get in normally into the garage and out of the garage.
Well, then the other thing is the interior of the garage. I think you got eighteen feet is the interior dimension of the garage. Boy, that's, that's, that's getting really tight.
Well, you're right. If they have big cars, they're not gonna be able to park inside. Simple as that. Not big cars. If they have a, you know, Escalade or, or something like that, that's gonna be a problem. But hey, that's, when people buy, they're gonna be aware of that.
Yeah. Well, anyway, a lot of concerns from that standpoint. I also try to understand the, what, what gets us where we are and that we want to go forward. So I, I'll be happy to listen to my fellow commissioners on what they have to say.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah. I had the same initial thoughts as Commissioner Van Buren, like, why? Why are we putting the residence between the two commercial uses? But I do appreciate your history that you provided. That was helpful to give some context to how existing uses ended up where they are today. I, when I look at the site plan, there are, there are unfortunate consequences of the limited frontage. But I don't, I don't see anything that's prohibitive in the design myself. I mean, I think it worked. These, like you said, people who are purchasing these units, they're gonna know what they're getting. And it's a little more of a cramped space than maybe if it was another site. I think it would still better serve this location to have two units than, say, a single-family home or something like that. Because I think the density is better for Cass Avenue. I do have some questions. The backyard, and there's a larger backyard, of course, in the front. Is that backyard a shared yard for both units or just belonging to the back?
No, it's shared yard.
Okay.
So they can have a garden. They can have their kids play back there safely and stuff like that. Yeah, shared. It's gonna be common area.
Common area. And then the, the note for a concrete pad for trash cans, is that something the village reviews for location? What's the reviewing agency?
What the village had indicated to the applicant was, come prepared because it's a narrow site. So some of the typical questions we have, like, where do you do your snow removal? And, and in this case, because there's not a lot of room in front of the garage, that's where people would usually put their trash cans. So staff did, did ask, well, is there gonna be a dumpster? Should there be an enclosure? How are you gonna do trash service? So he did provide where he was going to put that, just so that he could illustrate that it could be accommodated somewhere.
Okay. Yeah, that's all. I just want to make sure that before you pour the concrete, you talk to waste management, see where they want to put it.
Yes.
I think that's all the questions I have. I, I think it's an, and I just want to say also, your level of resilience and patience on this project is astounding. I think you said you, you've owned this now for fifteen years or how, more?
Thousand and four, I think. It's almost twenty years, nineteen years. And we tried our best, believe me, numerous times. I would say minimum, minimum, we talked to the doctors minimum half a dozen times as recent as two, three years ago, as a year ago. And then with the people to the north, there was just no, they're unreasonable. I mean, just to give an example, we bought this property from mid-twos. I don't remember at that time exactly, two forty, two thirty, two forty, two fifty, whatever it was. Let's say mid-twos. At one point, when we were building the town, the condos next door, which was selling, they were big size, seventeen hundred sixty square feet, two-car garage and roof deck and everything beautiful, you know, the one next door, four-seventeen. First, it was, no, I don't want to talk to you. I don't have partners. I don't want to sell to you. I don't want to do nothing with you. Fine. And he told us numerous times, very rudely. And as a matter of fact, I think once we were here for something and his son came in, he's a, he's a attorney and he became, made a scene here, you know, I think I recall properly. And then he calls us, called us once and he says, oh, I gotta, maybe I'll do a deal with you guys. I said, okay, open to talk. And he says, okay, I'll take the two condos plus three hundred thousand. So nine hundred thousand, two condos values plus three hundred, one point two five million in two thousand and four. So how do you talk to this people? I mean, you can't do nothing. The people to the south are really nice and accommodating, but they, they don't want to retire. So they are, and we really don't have much choice. And we offered to, for them, we offered to sell it to them for later on if they want to do it. No. And so obviously, carrying the property for so long, and like I said, we had a painting company there. They were wonderful people. We never raised them one dollar. They paid every time on the first for like seventeen years they were there, so whatever. They were there before us, actually. They were there for a long time. They, they didn't have any, they didn't want to stay there. They didn't want to buy, they couldn't stay there because they want to operate their office from there, and it's not allowed by code anymore. So basically, we couldn't, we couldn't, we tried a couple of times remodeling the building, and then he got to a point where it doesn't make any sense to put fifty thousand in the building for another year or two or whatever. So we just tore it down.
Yeah. I appreciate the context. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Scales?
Sure. Thank you. Appreciate all your efforts in town over the years too, and echo some of the things, same things that Commissioner Sharp had to say. So I have a couple of questions. Obviously, I know it's, it would be a dead horse at this point, but it is a shame not being able to get those adjacent lots to play ball. And I would hope the people you talked to ten years ago would have, would probably change their mind now to be more supportive of something. But just to confirm a couple of things, these are for sale or will they be for rent?
No, they'll be, the units themselves will be for sale.
They'll be for sale. How does the, you mentioned the common area in the back would be shared space. How does that break down in ownership?
I think in the middle of the, you, you basically, there would be some subdivision. I have to talk to the surveyor and we have to decide this, but all the area outside would be common area, and there would be small association which they can manage themselves between them. So we'll put some, the docs to state that they have to match the colors, you know, they don't go crazy or something like that. And then they can do whatever they want. But basically, it was not fair to give the guy in the back the whole back area because if somebody buys his kids or whatever, they want to have a garden, they can have a, it's a huge back area.
So they split the ownership then between the two units?
It's open. It's common area. Just like if you have a, if you, if you have bigger development, but you share a common area. So.
Who's responsible then for taking care of that?
Well, there would be association. So they're gonna have to have somebody, whatever they decide, how they're gonna face somebody, they're gonna have to probably pay a couple hundred dollars a month each, and they use that to, to, for snow plowing and the landscape maintenance and stuff like that.
So there'd be an internal association just for the two units?
Because we built a couple of other buildings. I know that we built something right down the street, two units. And there were many, there's a number of buildings that were built like two units townhomes, just like this.
Okay. I was just curious. I was curious.
That's what it is. We just felt it would be best use for the people to share that.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification on that. And then I'm just curious, like, over the course of reviewing the site, I mean, were there any variances? And again, like I said, I'm not an architect or an engineer like the two guys on each side of me here are. But I mean, are there any variances that could have been considered to make it more, alternatively different?
Just to give you a little history. So, so when I walked into this project, it was already in process. And I think we had, the, the village had given a nod to three units and then realized that it was inappropriate. And it all comes down to the nuance of how we were defining, was it multifamily? Was it the single-family semi-detached? So initially, I think we were requiring ten-foot setbacks to the north. But by reducing it by one unit and then redefining it as a semi, a semi-detached unit, he was allowed to do a five-foot setback. So it's, I think we were trying to make sure that we exercised everything we could to give him as much buildable area as possible within what the code was permitting. So there were, there were many, many redesigns. So.
I was just curious if there were variances that could have been considered or just picturing different design types or not. But.
I think what's hard is, is that doing one unit in front of the other, you were always gonna end up with a condition where you needed a drive to go down one half of it. Otherwise, you know, the, you know, you'd have to either do a, a unit back-to-back where one unit was facing the back and one unit was facing the front. And I'm not gonna say there weren't alternatives that were better. I think they were all just kind of trying to make everything fit the best they could.
Like mutually better, like where it was economically viable for you and also good for the layout of the, the land use?
I don't know that we ever looked at it from layout of amenities because I think what, what Walter was saying is they're, they're gonna go and do a condominium plat, which is not the same as a subdivision. So we don't necessarily review it based on when he subsequently goes and does a condominium plat and, and what kind of amenities each one of these are having. We look at this from a standpoint that whether it's rentals and stays rentals, or whether it's, it gets condo, condominiumized later, just is it a smart design? And to some degree, we, we react to the designs that are given to us and say, here's how to make them as best as we can. And we try not to overstep and say, you need to scrap your ideas and do what we want you to do. So I don't know that earlier before I walked into this, if we were going, trying to make recommendations on how to make the site work better. Probably not. Probably his architect was doing the best to accommodate all of our comments, which were lengthy in terms, we have concerns about this. You have an overhang that's encroaching, that's not permitted. I think I made him accommodate the, the Cass Avenue setback, which is an increased setback on Cass Avenue. It's one of those supplemental setback lines. And then there was some back and forth on whether detention would need to be provided or not. And so the backyard was for a while reserved for detention. And then in the, the final determination, it didn't need to be detention. And it could kind of serve as outdoor space. So I don't think I gave you a good answer.
No, it was informative. I appreciate it.
I just want to make one point. From my, our experience, and I've been business for forty-three years building this, there is, there is a demand. And I, I really believe chances are very good that somebody's gonna come and buy both units. Where you have the families, they want to have a family member next door. Or you have somebody who wants a one unit and says, I have extra money. I'm gonna buy both units. I'm gonna rent a second one to help me financially. But there is many instances where you have two family members that are gonna say, we want to be close to each other, or somebody has in-laws or somebody, and they just buy the whole, it's only two units. So that will, you know, reduce, but when you have a one neighbor next door to you, and if they're reasonable, they're gonna, they're gonna say, okay, you want to do a garden? Let's split it. I'm gonna do it on this side. You can do on this side. We're gonna share, you know, and it's, it's a very, but I think there's a good chance.
Or they could be the Hatfield McCoys. We don't know, right?
Yeah, we don't know. We don't know what's gonna happen there. I can't tell you what's gonna happen. We, we don't have intention of renting it. But if it, you get stuck with it with economy, you rent it for a while, but whatever it is. But I'm just telling you.
No, I appreciate that. And you mentioned the neighbors to the south. They were looking at doing a medical office building. I know it's.
Yes. They, but I think now they don't want to do that either because they, they wanted to do that ten years ago. Now they're getting up there in age. They had two daughters. Both of them left the houses. They said, we don't need it. It's too late. But they don't want to sell there because then, they don't want to move to start. They need a medical office, and they don't want to retire yet.
So they live, do they live there?
No, no, no. They live in Oak Brook.
Okay, they just operate their business.
It's only eight hundred square foot, but they have a, it's very, very tight. They're very nice people. Very, very nice people.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it. Thank you for the feedback.
You're welcome.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Okay. Appreciate the work that you do in town and glad that you're here.
Thank you, sir.
I did have a couple of questions for Joe first, and it kind of came up in this conversation about the condo plat. See, I was thinking about the conflicts that, that Commissioner Van Buren brought up about the, the driveways and how that's gonna work. And looking at a plat, there would have to be some sort of, of shared easement there for ingress egress. But when I look at the, at the design and the depth of the, of the garage, the owner of the lot on Cass, the Westerly built, Westerly unit, if there's a car parked in front of that garage, it, you cannot navigate, and the owner of this parcel to the east cannot get to his unit if there's a car parked there.
Where? You're talking about?
The driveway in front of the garage because typically the car.
There's not enough room to park in front of the driveway, I don't think.
Well, there's, my point though is there's not enough room to park a normal-sized car in the garage either. So I think.
There is, there is. No, that's not true, sir. Eighteen feet depth is standard in many places. Chicago, I built a lot of million-dollar homes, eighteen-foot-deep garages. Your car typically is fourteen to sixteen feet deep, maximum. So it's not like you're building for small cars. That's not, that's not true. It's not gonna, if you have a long bed truck, it's not gonna get in there. If you have an Escalade, I don't know if it can get in there. I don't know the depth, the length of the Escalade. But typically, the cars are twelve to, to sixteen feet, maximum. So we got eighteen feet.
Okay, but on the plat, are we gonna have, is something on that plat gonna say that that has to be left open, you know, to, to avoid any particular conflict?
This driveway is actually common area. So nobody owns the driveway.
Okay, but there's no, there's no way for two cars to pass each other?
No, but there's only two units there. You know, what are the chances if somebody, if one guy's pulling out?
I, I think a good way to handle it, and, and I was gonna actually suggest this to Mr. Veselinovic, is that you should be the one to create the covenants, conditions, restrictions.
Yes, we will.
And the homeowners' association. You're, you're the declarant. You put that in place.
Yes.
And that can include things like you can't park in front of a garage.
Correct.
And then that gives rights, once he sells it, to the owners to enforce that provision.
And that's where I was going. So we didn't see that. And that's where I was going, so we didn't see that information here, so...
Right, and I think that should probably be a condition, um, you know, in the ordinance, approving this, if the village board wants to approve it, is that as a condition for building permits, we have to see a recorded, um, you know, formed HOA with...
We'll definitely accommodate that, because definitely, because I, I'm not attorney. Thank you so much for, for explaining that, but we definitely wanna avoid conflict between the two owners and we have to, we have to do the docks, so.
Correct.
And I was gonna see attorney to do that, and every, everyone is different, even they have boilerplate stuff, but there's stuff like this, it comes up that I, I couldn't, I'm not attorney.
If you leave it to the homeowners to do themselves, once you sell it, chances are they're not gonna do it. And then you get disputes and one owner may not wanna do any maintenance, and so you need to really get that in place.
Definitely, we, we have no issues about you, you know, requiring that to be submitted before permits are issued. That's no problem, and approved by the city and, and stipulating what you would like to see. And that's a valid point, very valid point.
Yeah, I just wanna, see, the way I look at, at all applications is, is it a workable solution?
Sure.
I know that when you give to various designers and, and people you've worked on a long time, uh, yourself, does it work? And what I have in front of me, without having the solution in its entirety in front of me, when I have a fourteen-foot driveway and somebody's parked in the driveway, can't get to their house, it's a conflict for me and that tells me it doesn't work.
You're absolutely correct.
That's where I'm at, that...
Absolutely correct.
You know, someone, then somebody's gonna have to back onto Cass Avenue, and that's not, that's not a good situation either.
No, not at all.
Uh, and if you got, now you add in, you know, winter weather, you've got all kinds of things going on.
Well, we got parking, if you've noticed, we have a guest parking, four guests. I'm not saying that's a, but you have a point, hundred percent, and I think, uh, Mr. Zamanek's, uh, uh, solution is absolutely right. And we're gonna, uh, just to make a point to you, these units are gonna be half a million dollars plus, okay, each. So we're not gonna spend a million dollars, uh, and then, and then not build it right or the, the driveway doesn't right, doesn't work, nor is the architect as good. So I assure you that we, it's gonna work. And absolutely, we can, we can put a condition in there and, uh, like I said, uh, nobody, everybody would be smart enough to, to, who lives there, to, to see that they shouldn't do that because they are making a problem for the neighbor. And, uh, any guests, we'll see a guest parking and, and be instructed to park there. So, I mean, you are, your, your point is very valid, I appreciate it. And, uh, but I think we definitely don't have a issue about making it part of our documents.
Okay, I, I, I make comments and questions based on what I'm given. And, you know, the, the other thing that there was, there was a couple of, of comments in here related, you know, from the engineering review and the packet that, that Joe submitted to us about, uh, that fire main. I, I'm concerned about that because it's shown on your plans being right along the north property line. And I'm assuming that since it would have to be a fire main, that would be a public main. Am I mistaken?
I don't have an answer for you on that, it's, it's outside of my scope of understanding.
Which main is this, I'm sorry?
The, on, on the engineering plan on sheet number... Sheet number one and sheet number two oh five, this sheet that shows the shading?
Yeah.
They're, they're showing, uh, two water services that come in. And I think that, that the plan is suggesting that there would only be a, a small inch and a half copper service, but that's not gonna be big enough for the fire suppression.
Oh, it is.
An inch and a half line is big enough for fire suppression?
Yes, yes, it's per code, they, it will not get approved by the review. This is, uh, I mean, that's definitely, we, there is sprinkler system in each unit. And the reason we're doing two services is because all the utilities are separate on each unit. So that is the reason we're running two separate services for water.
I know I have an inch and a half service in my house and I don't have fire, I don't have a sprinkler system, so...
It's not ba, well, the sprinkler system is, um, that's sufficient. I built a bunch of, bunch of units here and that's, and this was, uh, checked by, uh, by a civil engineer, so. And this is not submitted, this is not submitted for permits yet to the city, but obviously, there's going to be...
Understand, like I said, I take this...
They are going to obviously make comments if that doesn't work.
I look at this from what I've been given, and what I've been given...
I'm just saying definitely inch and a half service. And the reason you have inch and a half for yourself, because now most of the villages require, places require you, the reason is they go by the number of fixtures that you have in your, in your house.
I totally understand that, my, maybe you're kinda missing my point. My point is that it's not gonna be an inch and a half, okay, to run into the second unit, I don't think.
Oh, it is, for each unit, inch and a half.
It's gonna, it's gonna run along north property line, within five feet of the lot line?
He's showing that it's, it's per code and it's going to be buried.
I just wanna make sure it works.
Well, of course, and that, that is going to be, that's gonna have to be approved by, by your building department as well as the fire department, so if it's not the proper, they're gonna adjust it, but I'm telling you that from my experience, that, that's, that's appropriate. And I, I'm not the one who asks for inch and a half or two, two inches, typically it's inch and a half. All their homes have half inch or three-quarter inch, and sometimes when people are doing additions, when they count number of bathrooms and, you know, how many, how much water you need, they wanna make sure that you have enough, and that's, sometimes they can make you, if you're enlarging the house and adding bathrooms, they, they make you change the service from three-quarter inch to, or inch, to inch and a half in order to accommodate enough water to satisfy the, all the fixtures that you have inside the house. But as far as the, uh, sprinkler system, the sprinkler system is active, full of water, and, uh, if there's a fire, the, uh, the sprinkler system goes off, the fixtures in the house are not being used. So that is the reason it can work, whereas typically in commercial, you, you need a six-inch line for water service. You are absolutely correct on that. So it's not something that it's gonna get passed and approved by the city.
My point is this.
Yes.
It's not about the size of, of the pipe, okay? It's about the accessibility, about where it's located on the plan.
Why it's gonna be on the ground.
Or if you put a, a pipe along the north side of the building and you have less than five feet to get to it, to maintain it...
There's no maintenance, and if you do have a maintenance, if it bursts or something, you can still get a, you, we have twenty-four-inch bobcats, thirty-inch bobcats, thirty-six, so it's, so, so, so stability is not a problem.
All right, um, I have no further questions.
May, may I respond to a couple, because Commissioner Lavoy did direct a couple of questions to staff and I feel I didn't give adequate answers yet. So first on the water service, I believe on a project this small, that when the project first comes in, um, it is referred to the water department basically, and they just look and say, is there a main nearby? Is a main that, is there a main that can serve it? So I, whether it's an inch and a half or another requirement, I don't believe they've reviewed it beyond that at this stage. Um, really what it is, is we wanna make sure that we get the easement that's necessary for those to live in. And I know that, uh, our engineer is getting a five-foot easement there. No, it's not ideal, everything on the site is compressed, and, you know, it's, it's by no means ideal. And now I will admit that I don't know everything, and I'll turn to John to see if he has greater insight. Um, my only concern about the discussion we had on the declarations and covenants is, uh, am I wrong in, in that there are certain state statutes that allow the applicant to go into a condominium plat without village's approval? So, um, there are exceptions, so...
Yes.
So, so Commissioner Lavoy, in terms of these easements or permissions, um, there are certain rights that they have to go just to the state or the county, I don't know who does the condominium plat, um, without our review. So my question to you, John, is, when you had said that a condition of approval could be that we receive a recorded document, or covenants, what if we don't like it? What, what is, what is the staff's ability? Cause, cause I think the way you stated it was, was that with permits, we need to see that there is a recorded covenant, but what happens if we don't like it? So let's say it doesn't have a restriction on parking in the drive aisle. Um, do we just accept it because he's met that requirement of recording a covenant, or...
Good question, uh, as always, and, yeah, the village would have the right to say, if, if, if it's completely inadequate CCRs, um, that they have to revise it and the village can say, we're not gonna issue building permits.
Okay.
And I have a note to include that in the ordinance and include, uh, that it must have a prohibition on parking in the drive aisle.
Okay, I, that...
And if it's in the ordinance, then that gives you more teeth, at least as to that issue. Now, there may be, you know, a hundred other issues, um, but usually by, you know, retaining an attorney who knows how to draft these documents, in many ways, a lot of the provisions are standard and should be acceptable.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that staff had the authority they needed when the time came. Um, and the other thing that you indirectly were, were discussing is this, this property has really been skirting commercial requirements versus residential requirements. In a perfect world, that driveway that is two-way would be, um, a two-way drive aisle, which is usually twenty-four feet wide.
Right.
Um, we couldn't require the full twenty-four foot width, so we asked the applicant, said, well, can you at least get the turning radius of twenty-four to get into the garages, which are already small and, and, yes, you can build garages that small, but it won't serve every vehicle that everyone has out there. Maybe, you know, with gas prices, everyone's gonna start buying smaller, but, um, we've, that's been the push-pull of what this project is, is commercial requirements versus residential requirements. So I'll give you a good example, is there's only a three-foot, um, setback of that drive aisle to the south property line. There is no curb, because we can't require a curb, because we can only require curbs on parking lots of greater than five parking spaces. So you note that there's only four parking spaces, so curbs aren't required. So is there an opportunity that people are parking in that drive aisle and parking two feet into the grass? Yes, so I think those covenants do become very important and, and it, it just illustrates another constraint on a very narrow lot, so...
Yes, and I think this project, like you stayed, stated initially, it's a tug on variations between residential, commercial, and the comp plan, and then what is best for the, for the property. But I'm, I'm looking at it purely from information I've received, it doesn't work or doesn't it work? And in my mind, it doesn't work from what I see. So it, it's something that, that I wouldn't wanna live there, I, I put myself in, in driving into that second lot and it, it's always gonna be a conflict. And even if you have it written in the covenant restriction, the car's gonna be there. Neighbors have conflicts all the time, and I don't want the village to be in conflict, uh, either, like, how, why did you approve that? And then also, like you said, with the, the three-foot setback, uh, there's drainage issues, there's all kinds of things that impact other people's properties. The lighting that, that will spread out to the neighboring property from that parking lot, you know, would be a concern. Uh, there's no sight lighting that is shown for that parking lot.
But that's usually, there's no requirement to show lighting.
I get that.
And I'll also say this...
Lighting for your home, for parking.
With the, with the CCRs and a homeowners' association, that's usually, um, I would say almost never something that's presented at this stage. Um, there have been many situations where there's a detention lot that's gonna be maintained by a homeowners' association. I'm sure you could come up with a hundred questions about maintenance of a detention lot and say, where's the CCRs that govern that? And, um, you know, they're all good questions, um, but maybe a little, maybe not within the purview of what you're looking... Like, you can raise those concerns and say, I'd like to see those in the CCRs, and then it's staff's job to make sure they're included. Just a thought when you're reviewing, you know, a site plan.
Can I just point one, couple of questions for you, if I'm understanding this correctly? We are here to review and approve the site and landscape plan approval and for construction of two units in the R4 general district. Anybody's opinion that this is too small, too tight, is personal opinion. We meet all the requirements, there's no variances. Again, I tried to be nice and point out to you people that we build in twenty-four-foot lots, houses, and everything works. Twenty, eighteen-foot-depth garage is a standard-depth garage, it's not a undersized garage. So not everybody's to get this idea, that's wrong, there's nothing wrong with this property. I would not make a, take a chance to build, to, to develop it and spend a million dollars and, and it doesn't work. All of your points are correct and well brought up, but you have to understand one thing. There isn't going to be fifty people coming out of here or ten people, there's only two residences. And then you're saying about light interfering with neighbors, I mean, come on, you, 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 they're gonna have, this is just like a single-family home, they're gonna have light by the garages, two lights, they're gonna have a light at the entrance door, they're gonna have light on the patio, there's plenty of light. There's street light near for the rest parking, so everything is lit properly, nobody's, nobody is, uh, being affected as far as neighbors or anything else. So I appreciate all your comments, but I would really like to ask you to please stay on the agenda and see what the requirements are, and we, we worked for a year and a half with your changing of three people and your staff, or two, three people, and, and everybody told us what to do and we complied. And now we're getting to this and we're getting asked questions, which obviously are gonna be reviewed by the city, and if they don't comply and they're not legal, they're gonna make us change. And I'm telling you, they are correct, and you still don't not happy with it. I cannot change your mind, nor am I trying, trying to change your mind. So I really appreciate that, uh, if I can, I can get that out of you, if I can't, that's fine. So please, I, I mean, I, I wanna answer any question that you might have, we worked very, very hard and we're very, very patient. And, uh, so, uh, there was an approval across the street for four units on the same-sized lot. And I don't know how big their garages are. I guarantee you, it's much more denser and much more issues than this. And, uh, actually, you set a precedent across the street. And I'm not in a fighting mood and I don't wanna create a problem, I don't wanna take you to court and say you set us precedent. I don't wanna do that. We came here very nicely, we started with four, they said we wanted to do three. After we said we have, you set the precedents across, we did three, then they said, well, oh. And we followed everything that they told us, and that lady is not here anymore. We spent a year and a, almost a year and a half here, going back and forth, and now we being, getting off the track, in my opinion. Am I correct? Is this gonna be, is the building department gonna approve anything that's not approved by the code?
All I can, all I can state is that the building department will review this to the current code standard.
That's, that's what I'm trying to say, and that's what I would like to point out to you. So I appreciate your concerns, but that's the reason you have Public Works, that's the reason you have Engineering Department, that's the reason you have consultants, that's the reason you have, uh, Joe here and everybody, and we are complying with all the codes, we cannot get a permit without it. So I don't know how else I can say that, you know, uh, it's personal preference, you wouldn't buy it there? I understand that, I, I, you know, I, some people can live in a condo or a townhome development and some people love it. So it's, it's a per, personal preference and I, I, I understand your personal, perfectly, but I really think we should point, you know, I mean, I, I, I don't know what, what else I can say, I'm sorry. I, I just don't know what to, what else we can do on our part.
Okay, Commissioner Clement.
Okay, um, so, you know, I do appreciate your concern, frustrations and stuff like that, um, with, but, like, I, I do appreciate the fellow commissioners, the questions that they did have. My question was about the parking, um, I'm satisfied with saying you can't, you know, park on the side and stuff like that, so it's meeting and exceeding requirements, so in my opinion, you know, I'd be in favor of it.
And Commissioner Thomas.
Um, and like everyone else, initially, driving by and, wait a minute, you know, it's, it's, you know, I'm, I'm looking at, at, at home, looking at the blueprints and that, oh, okay, well, I know where this is at. Yeah, I know, but I don't know what's there now, and what I thought was there is no longer there in that, yeah. Okay, so, anyway, I think you've taken what you have space-wise and moved it back and moved it and adapted to what, what you, um, you've answered most of my concerns.
Tried to put the best product on, on the lot that you put.
You are not going to pull in there in a limousine, no.
No, it's not designed for limousine parking.
You'd be a fool to buy it if that's what you got. You know, you have to adapt to what's there and what's allowed...
Ninety-five percent of the cars will fit in there.
What's allowed to be there, and, and you know what's allowed to be there, and you built what was allowed to be there.
That's great, sir.
That's all you can do.
That's all I can do, sir. Thank you for understanding that, believe me, that's the truth.
Okay, that's all I got.
Okay, and same here, you know, my absolute preference would be if, you know, if you could make a deal with one or both of the neighbors and combine those, because if you develop... and combine those, because if you develop this property like this, it really, in the future, and those are two older homes, you know, they're not going to be there forever, those, on those, on those neighboring lots. And, you know.
Eighteen years.
It restricts those two lots from doing essentially the same thing.
Eighteen years we're waiting, believe me.
I know. And 25 years from now, you know, somebody's going to drive by there and say, "What the hell were, was the village thinking? Putting those three little narrow things in there together." And, but again, you know, you've done everything you can to, to fit this and to make it.
I don't know what else we can do. I mean, we can do another thing. I can tell you, I can do something very, to satisfy everybody's. We can build a narrow apartment building, rental, two units. Would you like to see that there? It's going to look like, it's going to look terrible. Two-story building rental. Nobody's going to buy a condo, two-story raised, raised rent, ranch. And we paid too much for, for the property to, 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 for anybody. What is going to be the value of it? You know, but we are complying, we're meeting all the requirements. We're doing everything we can. We tried so hard with everybody and we were so patient with the city. We thought we're going to get four units. We're going to lose money on this project, for sure. There's no way we can make money. But we want to just get it done. Get it over or I'll sell it. I offer to people to buy it below what we paid for. We spent a lot of money on demolition. We stayed on improving the house twice, $50,000. We, we spent on architects. We spent on changing this, changing for last year and a half, I spent $20,000 with architects and engineers, minimum, for a small project like this, which is unheard of. And it's not even completed yet.
All right, sir. Well, before I call for a motion, does anyone else have anything to add?
Yep.
Judge Attorney, then.
Thank you very much, Ray Tom. And I'm so sorry.
Thank you, sir.
I don't want to come across a long way, but believe me.
We need to discuss all these things. Under PZC 128-2020, a request from Walter Valesavenevich and Rose Development Corporation regarding property at 413 North Cass, the site and landscaping approval for the construction of a two-unit, single-family, semi-detached dwelling in the R4 general residence district. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Ben Bearden.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Van Bearden votes yes. And Commissioner and Chairman Carmichael.
Yes. Okay, sir. You have our vote and you'll be notified by staff when you'll be scheduled to, to appear before the village board. Thank you for coming. Next item, PZC 015-2022, request from McGrath Auto Body Shop and 720 Kangery LLC regarding the property at 725 Pasquenelli Drive in Westmont for the following: A special use permit amendment to perform painting, body, and fender work in addition to other authorized automobile dealership activities in the B2 general business district. Good evening, sir.
Hi. My name is Tom Christensen. I've been with McGrath for 31 years and started when Mike Senior built the Lexus dealer on Augen Avenue. And obviously, a lot of things have happened since then. He bought it accurately when it countryside, moved it up. The property we're referring to used to be called Team Chevrolet years ago. And when he, when the McGrath bought a kind of rundown strip mall next door to the dealership to add on, we had to move our service department. And at that point, they bought that piece of property. And you were kind enough to, I was here about 15 years ago, you were kind enough to allow us to move our service center down there while they did the remodeling in addition. And since then, we moved back and the building fell into disrepair. So the question was, do you keep it or fix it? And they opted to fix it. And we put all new roofs on it and also redid the entire parking lot. And we've been looking for use for it. Recently, since, we, we used to lean on, a lot of our customers come to us for body repair, even though we don't have a body shop, they would like a referral. We used to lean pretty heavily on Westmont Body Works, but since they've sold to Auto Nation, their throughput went way down. Obviously, they want to take care of our own clients first. So with that, we've got a estimator in our service drive with the body shop group that has body shops in Franklin Park, Schaumburg, and Chicago. And currently, that's where most of the work is going. We'd like to, number one, have a use for the building. Number two, be able to take care of our own customers. So we would, again, that used to be Team Chevrolet. If you're familiar with the building, you had a service shop on one side and a body shop on the other side. So it was a body shop previously. And we'd like to put a body shop in there to take care of our customers, called McGrath Collision Center. And that's where we're at. This is Simon. He's our architect. If you have any questions for him or for me.
Excellent. Good evening.
Simon Yu, architect, working on a handful of projects for the McGraths. So just a couple of things to add is that we are intending to upgrade, rather fulfill, the landscape agreement from P4. And we are planning to also paint and just spruce up the place. We're not, we are not intending to increase the footprint at all. Let's see. And the McGraths are planning on taking on a partner to, to help, that's more in the business of body shop, so that, to get them going.
Could you be a little more specific on that landscaping statement?
Yeah, yeah. From what Joseph had informed me is that previously, there was an agreement on the site of some, of certain landscape that hasn't been fulfilled. So we are certainly planning on doing that as a part of this project.
Steph? So I'll just jump in there real, real quick. So there is, so in 2006, when the McGraths took over this property, there were requirements for the service element that was going on there. It's a special condition and a special use that basically says that the vehicles that are awaiting service need to be screened with landscape or something. So there was an improved landscape plan that was adopted in 2006 that is still applicable, including for this request. I think just over time, it's been neglected. And so what they're indicating is when they move into the building, they'll restore what was always supposed to be there. Correct? And then there is an existing landscape plan for the remainder of the property that is probably deficient. So we'd probably ask that you, if it is truly deficient, that you bring it back up to what it once was. But in particular, for the screening of the vehicles, there was an adopted landscape plan right at the entryway to try to screen the vehicles. I have more to say, but I'll make sure that they're not, they're.
And I'd point out that 2006 ordinance did require the applicant to continuously maintain the landscaping, which they haven't done. So even if they didn't agree to add the new landscaping, the village could enforce that requirement of the ordinance.
A couple of other things is, in front of you, I think you have the parking diagram.
I'm going to ask IT if you can put the laptop onto the screens for us. Thank you.
Yeah, and as Tom mentioned, the McGraths have two other dealerships, so they, they intend to use this area as some of the overflow because the land was a little bit tight on their two other dealerships in terms of their inventory. So as you know, they're Acura and Lexus, so some of the nicer vehicles, more luxury brands. And for some of the collision, they, they will park that a little bit less, less visual places, I'll call it. So the more customer-facing areas would be the inventory and the car repair would be more of the backsides, I'll call it.
All right. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll try to fill in some of the, the missing pieces. So what this is, is an amendment to an already-approved special use that was approved in 2006. So basically, the request is to, under the umbrella of a dealership, which is what that special use in 2006 permitted, add the, the use of an auto body, because it wasn't specifically outlined as something that could be done. What was outlined was some general service and some inventory, storage. It actually didn't permit the sales from the site. It said that in the future, they might want to pursue sales back at the site. But when they approached the, the village staff and said, "Well, how do we go about getting, basically rejuvenating this property and moving business back into it? We want to have McGrath Auto Body that's serving our dealerships. We've got that need. What's the best way to do it? But we still want to preserve the fact that we sometimes need inventory to put over there, probably not in the current climate, but, you know." So amending this existing special use was deemed the most appropriate. So with the landscaping, so we would typically say, "Well, if you want to have service, you have to screen these vehicles." So what we were emphasizing was, well, we, we made that request in 2006. It's just fallen a bit to the wayside because I think you stopped doing service in that building many years ago. And so it wasn't really customer-forward any longer. It was more storage lot. So we, we're confident that the plan that was provided in 2006 is still adequate. It just needs to be brought back up to that standard. So we didn't ask for a new landscape plan. We didn't ask for them to redesign it. We just indicated, well, at this point, this is our chance to make sure that you are, are meeting what is required to be there. So as part of the build-out, we'll make sure that the landscape is restored to what it should be. What staff does advise, and I put this in the staff report, is that any motion, staff recommends that there be language added to the ordinance that make the statement that says indoor or outdoor storage of personal vehicles, boats, trailers, equipment, et cetera, not related to the approved business operations shall be prohibited. And the reason why staff is asking for that is historically, over time, some other vehicles have been stored in that lot that were not, that were not inventory. So sometimes they were boats or trailers or other things that weren't related to the actual business. They were just being stored because it was being used as a storage lot. We just ask, that we don't want that to occur, and it's only business operations that are occurring there. We would ask that be a condition of approval for the ordinance, so that code enforcement doesn't have any difficulty down the line if a boat shows up on the property and sits there, so that it doesn't become storage over time again.
Does McGrath family in objection to that, Mr. Christensen?
No, not at all. We welcome it. Unfortunately, sometimes we find vehicles in, in there that aren't supposed to be there. Buildings and empty lots acquire a lot of things, unfortunately, but.
Okay. But otherwise, it still appears to meet all the other special use standards that were in place when it was done in 2006 and still meets that as well. So as always, staff is here for any questions.
Thank you. Let's see, the only public I see out there is Mr. Forsberg from the Chamber of Commerce. Do you have any, any questions for the applicants? Excellent. Let's go to the commissioners. Commissioner Sharp.
Oh, I knew it.
I knew it.
My first question is, the packet that we got from CarStar, it's called CarStar Westmont. The plans, the first plans that include turning ready, I don't match the model views. My first question is, what's going on?
Yeah, that's true. We, we've actually done quite a, quite a few different kinds of layouts. And we haven't quite settled down yet on, on our internal layout. We haven't done the bathroom count yet. We haven't quite figured out where, where the lifts will go quite yet. So you've, you've seen two packets combined.
Good eye. It's pretty. Can you describe a little bit more about improvements to the exterior? You said that we're, that you're going to clean it up. What exactly does that entail?
Yeah. So, all right, from, from a, I guess from a structural point of view, we, we will punch a few holes in the building. So to, to make our, our lifts work. So that's one thing. Generally speaking, we're planning on, on, on painting and just generally cleaning it up, because it is in pretty poor shape. So we'll be top pointing, cleaning it up, things like that. But we won't be increasing this, this footprint at all.
I'd also like to see that brick a different color, too. Kind of a raunchy brown right now. We'd like to build something color scheme, make it more modern and more friendly. But that is, we, we don't know yet.
Painted brick is becoming popular.
Mr. Sharp, may I, so initially, we asked questions about what, what were you doing on the exterior? Because we were trying to establish that this should also include a site and landscape approval. And they indicated that they might have to, you know, add a bay door in a certain area and such, which all typically can just be permitted with permits. And we assessed at that time, based on what they told us on what they wanted to do, it wouldn't come to the level of site and landscape review. However, if they change what they want to do and we reassess and say, "Well, no, this really needs to come back for site and landscape." We'll bring it back if appropriate.
So I wonder if that limits us from addressing some of my questions, then. I was going to ask about what's being done for lighting on the site, if that's changing or if it's staying the same. And there's going to be any signage planned, like facing 83 or?
To the lighting, some of the poles over the years have rusted. We picked them down before they fell down. We're going to have to reexamine all that. I would imagine running by the city for relighting the lot. Because, yeah, those fixtures are not modern, they're not efficient, and they're not.
Sir, would you stand a little closer to the microphone?
Yeah, those, those fixtures are not modern and they're not efficient. So we would look at replacing them all, I would believe, on the outside. As far as the signage go, we'd certainly apply for a signage permit.
Yeah.
And, and any signs that we would like to put up, you know, obviously, to have the opportunity to review and approve or, or tell us to do something different.
Okay. And just to be clear, there's no visible service that would be happening exterior of the building?
No. The building's fairly large. We'll be starting out small and humble to begin with and try to build up our business over time. No, no work will be done outside. I mean, you would have some storages, some vehicles in progress outside, I would imagine. But nothing, no work will be done outside, correct?
All right, that's all my questions.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Scales?
Sure. I just have a couple of quick questions. And just for clarity, all we're talking about is allowing a special use or special use permit amendment so that they can do painting, body and fender work, et cetera. Nothing about a site plan or any changes of that nature?
Correct.
Is there currently any, apologies for my ignorance on what's happening here, but is there any, what is the level of service being done there now?
None.
None. Okay. So is there any painting, I guess I'm curious just environmentally, like, is there something that has to be in place to catch and dispose of?
Yeah, so previously, it, it did have limited bodywork. And previously, it did have a paint booth and all that sort of stuff. We went in there, we took a look at it, and it's, it just won't meet the current requirements or needs. So we brought in CarStar and we will, we will have paint scrubbers and all of those kinds of things that need to happen.
Ventilation.
I believe most of the paints they use today are water-based paints, not oil-based paints. So they're much more environmentally friendly. You had approved us to have MINT, which is a reconditioning program, in our current shop. And they went through all the paint specifications. And we'll be happy to do that as well when the time comes, if you.
I just assume that whatever it is, the, there's village requirements after me.
Oh, certainly.
The building and fire codes are pretty extensive on the paint booth requirements and, you know, the sanitary, you know.
Fair enough. I'm good. I just want to make sure. That's all I've got. Thanks, gentlemen.
Okay. Commissioner Lavoy?
I only have a couple of questions. One is hour of operations.
Well, I would imagine probably like a seven to five situation.
It's first shift, basically, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly not going to go six.
And people picking up or whatever. And I'm very supportive of what you do in, in the dealership. It's top-notch and I certainly appreciate you for what you do. And I really don't have any problem with the, what you have proposed here tonight. I do find it very interesting, though, that you have an easement to Route 83.
Yeah, I'm sorry?
You have an easement to Route 83 for ingress egress.
Maybe we'll build a road.
Saying.
Yeah.
You know, if that exists, that, that's something that, that IDOT has already approved, so.
I did not know that.
It shows up on this color drawing right in front of you where the employee barking is, that circular area that grants you easement to Route eighty-three.
I know there, a long time ago, there was an exit right there.
Yes.
Still available.
It's still there. According to your documents, it's still there, so that might be a benefit.
Totally.
Might be in the graph way.
I believe this property used to be addressed seven-twenty Kingery, which is the LLC that's asking for this because at one type of time, it was addressed on Route eighty-three. And we've since readdressed it over on Pasquenelli.
Hello?
Thank you.
Should be McDonald's.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Okay. Yeah, my only concerns was the odor and noise, but it sounds like that's been addressed on that. Has, with a public notice, has anyone had any surrounding objections, concerns, or anything like that?
I only had one inquiry from, so on the other side of eighty-three, it's property owned by the Forest Preserve. They only inquired, they just wanted to know what was happening. They had no opinion on what was being done, though.
Nope. I'm glad for everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas? Wake up.
You, thank you. You have an opportunity to pick up some business. You have a facility that starts addressing your needs and that you are willing to go work with staff in order to get that done to your satisfaction and our satisfaction, and that's what we ask.
Well, I mean, we've always had a great partnership with the village, and hopefully the respect goes both ways and it's mutually beneficial.
Glad.
Commissioner Van Buren?
No questions. I pretty much have been covered.
Same here. I would point out that the first car I bought from McGrath back in twenty-six, twenty-oh-six, I had serviced and washed at that, at that facility at that time.
Was it Pasquenelli, so, yes? Went from a very small waiting room to a whole show floor for a, for a waiting room, and our customers really loved that.
PZC zero-one, zero-one-five-two-zero-two-two, request from McGrath Auto Body Shop and seven-twenty Kingery Limited Liability Corporation regarding the property seven-two-five Pasquenelli for the following: Special Use Permit Amendment to Perform Painting, Body and Fender Work in Addition to Other Authorized Automobile Dealership Activities in the B-two General Business District. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Scales?
Second, Clemmons.
Motion, Scales, second, Clemmons. Discussion on the motion? And roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Van...
Is there a issue?
Let me get a comment.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Carmichael.
Before I vote, I'd like to comment from the village attorney.
Yes.
Actually, the vote's been taken, right?
Yes.
I just wanted to suggest a, an accompanying motion on conditions that the ordinance should include because Mr. Hennafin recommended at least one condition. And so if someone wants to make a motion that the ordinance includes the following three conditions: one, prohibition on the storage of personal or third-party vehicles on the property; a condition that the applicant must add or restore the landscaping as shown on the approved 2006 landscaping plan, and continuously maintain, repair, and replace such landscaping as necessary; and then third, that all conditions contained in the 2006 special use ordinance shall remain in full force and effect.
I'll move that.
Second.
Okay. First of all, I will vote on the first vote.
Yes.
Okay. And now we have a motion and second on Attorney's Eminem's proposal. You have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael.
Yes. There you go, gentlemen. Have our recommendation of the village board, and staff will notify you when you can appear before them.
And for indeed, thank you again.
Good luck.
And good evening. Thank you to your police force, too. Very, very good move.
Next agenda item, PZC zero-one-six-two-zero-two-two, request from the village of Westmont regarding the following: Zoning Ordinance Text Amendments to Define and Provide Zoning Regulations and Prohibitions for Firearms Sales in Various Zoning Districts. Mr. Hennafin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be presenting. This is a, this is a village-initiated text amendment. Since this will be the last case for two of my commissioners, I, I plan to be done maybe by ten, but...
That's not a problem. We're paid by the hour.
Okay, I want to give, I want to give a little history and background of why this is before us. So recently, so, so the clerk's office processes many different types of permits that are on state and federal levels, including something like a dealership license. When the state authorizes a dealership, the village has to sign off on that license, and usually, we would have an approved special use and we can sign off on that. Recently, there have been a few licenses for firearm sales, in very small scale, done out of residential properties. And when you examined our permissions and prohibitions of what home occupations could do, it did not prohibit firearm sales from a single-family residence. And so initially, the clerk's office notified administration that this seems a little odd, and zoning had no way to say, we have an opinion on it. So at that time, it was, it was discussed and said, well, maybe that's a prohibition that we feel should be there. So that opened a larger discussion on the fact that if you actually look at our zoning code, firearm sales aren't permitted in any zoning district. And as you know, typically, we have to accommodate all uses in the community somewhere. So that opened up the question of, should we just approach a text amendment and allow them somewhere versus sitting and waiting for someone to approach us and tell us where they think it should be, and they ask for a text amendment? So staff looked at a few neighboring communities to see how they did it, and then we brought this topic to administration finance, which was discussed as to give staff a little bit direction because there was, there was a nod that we should adopt some sort of zoning amendments for that. In that discussion, there were, there were several discussions on how to approach it. Should we put it in the M district? Should we put it in the business district? Should we mirror some other communities that, so for example, Downers Grove, I think, only permits it when it's accessory to a large user like a Dick's Sporting Goods or a Walmart. And so we looked at that, and the general direction that staff was given was, well, actually, you know, when we adopted the recreational cannabis rules, there were a lot of separation distances, and we only allowed it in certain districts. And they said, well, go look at that model. We think that model might be supported. And so what staff is coming forward with is a bit of a hybrid of that discussion. So first is a text amendment to the home occupation rules, and we did provide you with some draft language that was sitting at your seats tonight because it wasn't yet prepared when the staff reports went out. But there is some draft language. First, to amend the section six-point-oh-one, which is the residence district provisions, that's what defines home occupations. And basically, that adds a line item that says, any future recreation, or any future firearm sales in the residential districts is prohibited. Doesn't mean the ones that are already there can exist there. It just creates non-conforming, where they're allowed to be there for now. So that was one of the first text amendments that was being implemented. And then we were looking at, well, what zoning districts do we want to allow true firearm sales? And where I said it was a hybrid, so we are proposing it in the M district, but very similar to how we adopted cannabis. In the, in the M district, however, it has to be a hundred feet away from a residential property. It has to be three hundred feet away from a park, and it has to be a thousand feet away from a school.
And it's a special use.
And it's a special use. So it would need to come before this, this body and the village board to be considered. We did provide a map. That map is an exhibit. It's a, it's a point in time based on where the schools are, where the parks are, and where the residential districts are. And so, and it's a little bit, the map's a little bit confusing because it's combining both this M district and then what I'll subsequently discuss, which is the business districts. But if you look at the, I think the clearer map that was provided for you is the, not the one that shows the buffer zones, but the one that does not show the buffer zones. And what you notice is that all properties that are eligible are kind of done in a yellow hatch. And in particular, the M district is shown as kind of a purple, magenta color. You'll see that up by Ty Warner, there's only about five properties around Ty Warner that are both purple and have a yellow hatch on them. So those five properties would be the eligible five properties based on all those distance requirements around Ty Warner. So if there was ever concern about gun sales right next to our premier park, it's kind of limiting. The other is, we have an M district that is down in the southwest quadrant, down by Van Dusriel, and you'll notice that there are only what looks like two properties in the M district that would be eligible. So based on that recommendation of firearm sales, whether large scale or small scale, there's only a few properties in the M district, however, we are accommodating the use. The other hybrid piece of this is we said, well, we kind of liked what Downers Grove had, and we don't want to limit gun sales to a large user. So if we had a Walmart that wanted to build on Ogden Avenue and they had gun sales as part of their model, we wouldn't want to say, well, sorry, you can't do that. However, we also determined that we don't know that we want an independent firearms retailer, an exclusive firearms retailer on Ogden Avenue mixed in with the dealerships. So we said, okay, well, we will permit firearm sales only as accessory to a large user in our B-two and our C-one districts. So when you look at the map, the reason you see all of the red as yellow hatched is that is potential, but just keep in mind, that's not potential for an exclusive firearms dealer. That is for an accessory firearms dealer. And then John's worked very hard to craft some language for us to basically say, well, what is accessory? And we said, well, we looked at some of the sizes of these large-scale users, which can be seventy-five or eighty thousand square feet, and we said, well, we'll use forty-five thousand square feet as the minimum size. So if a Dick's Sporting Goods or a Ray O'Haraan or one of these other users, we'd say, well, you got to be a minimum of forty-five thousand square feet. And then we, in our definitions, we also are basically saying, you can't dedicate more than five percent of your floor area to that use. So if you were looking at a forty-five thousand square foot building, you can't dedicate more than twenty-two fifty, I think, square feet is what it works out to be for that use. So basically, we didn't want our zoning code to prohibit what could be a large advantageous user that might want to locate in the old Hobby Lobby or something like that down the line. I can go into much greater depth into the text amendments, but basically, the text amendments support what I say. So there, there was the home occupation prohibition. There is, we had to introduce a definition of what firearms and what firearm sales are, which is pretty lengthy, and it's, was researched extensively based on many different ways to define those, those things. Then we have to amend the B-two district to allow it as accessory, the C-one district to allow it as accessory, and the M district to allow it as a special use subject to those distance requirements. So I'm happy to answer questions. I'm happy to go over the map if you have any other discussion. We did publish in the newspaper. I did not get any calls on it, and I don't have anyone in the public here to discuss it, so...
All right, thank you. Anyone from the public? Seeing none, let's go to the commissioners. Commissioner Lavoy? Go after it.
It's such a political hot potato, right? I mean, it's, it's a... I guess my, my only question is, is the, that the existing residential properties that have the license, does that license carry with the property, or does that license carry with the individual?
Every new individual who would occupy that would have to not only get a new home occupation business license, but would also have to get their own FFL license, federal firearms license. There's an office in Downers Grove that administers it, and each time, they check with the village to see, does your zoning allow it? And they won't allow an individual to sell firearms, including ammunition, et cetera, out of a home unless the village says the zoning allows it.
So may I interject and ask a follow-up question then? So does that mean that another homeowner can come into the same location where a previous home occupation was? And does that fit the non-conforming allowable kind of changeover? Or does that expire with that homeowner? And then the second question is, what if that homeowner just moves two doors down? Can they carry that non-conformity two doors down?
So the second question's easy. The answer is no. A non-conforming use is unique to the, to the property. You can't change that to another property. I think you raise a good question. If another homeowner comes in and they're continuing the non-conforming use, usually, we say, well, if it's not interrupted for a period of, I think it's ninety days, they can continue that. But in this case, our zoning has intervened and, I don't know, to be honest. I'd have to give that some thought. My thought is that maybe the FFL license application process is going to take more than ninety days. So once a new owner comes in, then when they have to have ownership, then they can apply for the federal firearms license. So the use will be discontinued for a period of more than ninety days, and the village can say, any non-conforming use expired. Lastly, when a village enacts new regulations, whether they're building regulations, health regulations, and even certain zoning regulations, they usually don't have a retroactive effect on existing uses and such. But you can, in certain circumstances where that, there's a more of an urgent life safety need, make codes and ordinances applicable immediately and to all properties, regardless of their conforming or non-conforming status. But we would need a specific legislative finding to that point, and, you know, it'd have to be wrapped into this ordinance stating that existing uses cannot continue if there's a change of ownership.
That's where I'm going, about language like that to put that in because if we have something, that's going to be a lingering thing for many years than if we don't have that in there. And then my second question is, is paintball considered a firearm?
Good question. And in the very lengthy, diuretic definition of firearms, it actually addresses paintballs, and they're excluded. Paintball guns and certain BB guns that don't fire over a certain size ammunition and a certain velocity are excluded. And antique guns are excluded, and there's a definition for that. But I, but I think it's reasonable to add to the home occupation prohibition that, notwithstanding the non-conforming use language in section whatever, any existing home occupation gun sale use shall not be allowed to continue with a, with a new owner. Towards that fact, that wasn't our fleeced side, but...
Yeah, I get it. Yeah, other than that, I don't really have, most Joe, I think it's, we have to make the provision. It's state law that we have to make that provision?
Well, the, the state law is, it's not even a law, but, but it's developed through court decisions that if there is a lawful use in the state, any sort of lawful use, and someone comes in and says, I want to open up a business with this lawful use, you have to allow it somewhere in your village. Otherwise, it's called exclusionary zoning. If you say that, you know, this otherwise lawful use is not prohibited anywhere, and then you get sued over it. And Joe mentioned this, if we wait for an applicant to come in to the B-two district and argue, well, I'm just a general retail use. I happen to sell firearms, but... I happen to sell firearms, but I'm just general retail. Or I'm a hobby store, whatever. That can create a problem for the village. Or they can argue, fine, I'll process the text amendment to allow gun store sales in the B two district. And if the village denies it, then you have a potential lawsuit on your hands. So the thought was, let's proactively address this in case someone comes in and put them in the M district where a lot of uses of this sort are placed and with a limited exception for the B two and C one district.
Okay. I only have two other things. And that is, number one, has the police department weighed in on this?
Yes. I reached out to Chief Gunther and he was supportive. And I reached out to the mayor and the village manager before this ever got off the ground and they were supportive.
Okay, and my last question is, as a matter of security. Does it make sense when we allow this in particular districts that somehow we put in how those properties are protected? And really, I mean, it's amazing that McGrath was just here and our police department is worried about stealing cars. Well, if we have this type of use in town, it's going to be a target. So is there anything that we should put in the ordinance that would, you know, make the level of security of a facility comply with whatever standard you place in there?
Another really good question. And the ordinance only somewhat addresses that, which is in the definition of firearm sales, there's a list of six conditions. It says the firearms have to be in a secure location accessible only by the seller, the business owner, and not accessible to the public and there can't be window displays. But, and I know Joe asked this question of me today or yesterday, what does secured mean? Like, are you requiring that they be physically locked up? And also, to your question, are we requiring security cameras or other forms of security on site? And I did the old Google search for ordinances like this.
Right.
And most were unbelievably generic, if they addressed it at all. I found one or two really good ones. But even then, they were, I think, impermissibly vague when they talked about security. They just said, the premises shall be secured. And, you know, it's like, well, that doesn't, that doesn't help. And I also didn't want to over legislate where, you know, you get accused of government overreach by telling them you have to have this type of security system or that type of security system. So at least we address the fact that if someone walks in the store, the guns aren't sitting out where anyone can just grab them. But as far as breaking and entering, it doesn't address this.
Does the state or federal level have any oversight on what they're supposed to do under their application or address it at all?
As far as security within the store, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Not that I've read.
May I respond? So don't forget that if it's an exclusive firearms retailer, it would have to be a special use and written into the special use standards of safety and security is one of those. I think that this, both the planning and zoning commission and village board could hyper scrutinize those security measures when the applicant is before us. Now, it doesn't remedy the accessory user because that would be a permitted use. But maybe it's just me, I have a little more confidence that a Dick's Sporting Goods has protocols. Because they operate a bit differently than I think a small independent firearms retailer might.
Yeah, they have cameras all over, as does Walmart, et cetera.
So I think there is still some authority, even if it's not written well into the code, to say, we can scrutinize that when they come before us. And I could only hope that they say that the federal requirements or the state requirements are that we do this, this, and this, very similar to what cannabis users have to do. And if we're not satisfied with that, then I'm sure we could impose additional things.
I would imagine also that the homeowner's insurance policy, insurance carriers would have some stringent requirements as well.
Well, my last comment is actually for our economic development director. Because there are uses that I'm aware of, that some of my client base is looking at available properties that do firing ranges and training for SWAT teams and that kind of facility. There are not a lot of properties out there that do that. That could be the accessory use that we're talking about on some of these properties because they really are really hard to find.
So can I quickly address?
Sure.
So firing ranges was early on in our topic of discussion because firing ranges also are not a permitted use in our zoning districts anywhere. And we were perpetuating, kind of grouping firing ranges with our discussions. And then after many discussions, we decided that because of the constraints of firearm sales versus firing ranges, they were a little bit different, I think. And because of the very rare occurrence that we might be requested to have one of those, we decided not to tackle it with this text amendment. So tactically, we don't allow firing ranges in the village right now.
We also thought conflating the two issues, because they've got some separate concerns and stuff.
They do.
Might make this more protracted. And it's certainly something, if we get direction from the mayor and village manager to address at a future time, whether or not to allow firing ranges, you know, we can do so.
And I think where we started getting tripped up was the difference between indoor and outdoor and there's a lot of other constraints. And we just decided at this time that might be a bit more to tackle than at least getting this ordinance in place.
I get it, I'm sorry. But typically, these firing ranges are being run and being managed by either current or ex-law enforcement people. I mean, they're, you know, good people that they have this side business or this, now retirement has put me into that. I've done one up in Rockford and it was a retired state trooper that was the head of it. But it's tough to find.
There's one on North Avenue in Villa Park.
North Avenue, Villa Park is another one. I think there's one at Bowling Brook, too.
Yes. The indoor, underground, I mean, they're soundproofed and, yeah.
Anyway, I don't want to digress any further. I'm good with what you've done and it gives us the base to work off of. I'm just a little concerned about the residential, the carryover, or do people buy that property? And if that's going to get worked out, as we flush that, if properties are sold.
Hey, you also win tonight's prize for nearly stumping the village attorney.
Oh, it happens.
Close. You almost had him.
That's never ever going to happen.
Stop.
I propose that should be a monthly challenge.
Commissioner Clemmons?
I think this is well thought out. I'm good with it.
Commissioner Thomas?
Again, staff has impressed me.
Yeah.
And I concur.
And Commissioner Van Buren?
I agree.
Well, we're all in agreement. Good job, Joe. And John?
Yeah, I can't take credit. Director Sylvester put most of this together because I have a lot on my plate.
Oh, really?
He tackled a lot of this.
Oh, then we take back everything we said about you.
And it was a lot of coordination with John. And, you know, the mayor and administration and the board as well. The last question I have for John, which I don't think is a stumper. There is a clause in chapter 22, which basically there is a prohibition of sales, of gun sales in the village. It's really awkwardly written. It basically says, no gun sales in the village of concealed weapons, which kind of implies you could sell shotguns, but not handguns. We don't discuss the leashen or alteration of that because it's not a zoning code. I assume that when this goes forward, there will be a paired?
Yes.
Text amendment to either delete or amend that?
To delete it. And again, that goes back to nineteen seventy-two when the current code was adopted. We're not sure the rationale behind it, but the chief is fine removing it because it's not something we've ever enforced and it doesn't make sense.
Am I correct that it has to be removed to then adopt this code? Because we're thereby conflicting our own code if we adopt this and don't amend that.
Yes.
I have nothing further.
All right, thank you. In this case, under PCC zero?
I don't, I don't say these two guys. I want to read one sentence in this definition first and make sure I'm reading it right. It says, paintball guns and BB guns which expel a single projectile. So I know that there are paintball guns that are automatic. This would prohibit those or not? It's one bullet at a time, as are most automatic weapons. And so it says, which expel a single projectile not exceeding point one eight inches in diameter. That is much smaller than a typical BB gun, or a typical paintball ball.
So I'm sorry, the, because of the comma, I hope to make that clear by adding that comma, where it says, paintball guns, comma, and BB guns which expel a single projectile not exceeding da-da-da-da-da. So that phrase only applies to BB guns, not to paintball guns.
All right. That's, that's all I want clarity on. Because I would hate to deprive teenagers of their paintball guns. Fun activity. Yeah, I have one. The other, and I want to keep using, no. The other question I have, I mean, when I read through this at first, for whatever reason, I felt like someone should come to the defense of gun shops. It seemed like we were trying to push them out. Whereas before, it wasn't prohibited either in the zoning. It just wasn't mentioned. And now we're limiting them to like five sites and the thousands of parcels in the village. And I'm just, I assume that, that the village feels this is a safe constriction of their ability to exist. I mean, is five enough to not be sued?
Well, it's not just five because they can also operate as part of a larger retail store. And even sometimes retail stores will contract out to have a Starbucks. So they can contract out to have a private gun store within their forty-five thousand square foot or larger retailer or sporting goods store. So it does provide opportunities. And the question with exclusionary zoning is, have you restricted it so much that there's no reasonable property available for this use to go? And I think you could look and say, well, there are properties in the manufacturing district and there's the entirety of the B two and the C one with limitations that we felt are legislatively reasonable and I think a court will uphold that.
Okay. Can I respond as well? And you can correct me, John, if I'm wrong. The way we treat a use that's not listed, we treat it as prohibited.
Oh, okay.
Not expressly, because it's silent, you can do it. So basically, if someone approached us and said, well, I want to do firearm sales, we'd say, well, you're not listed use. So if you want to be in the village, you would have to also request a text amendment, which I think we saw a few months ago with catering sales in the OR district. We told them, you had to approach us with that request. And very much, there are a lot of different ways you can craft code like this. And staff was following the direction that we got from those discussions at Admin Finance, that they were comfortable with the stuff we did for cannabis and we liked the other provisions that we saw in another district. And just to give you a brief history, in my twenty years of many communities, I have not, I have yet to be approached by a firearms retailer that wants to locate. And in my about five-year history with Westmont, I've never been approached by a firearms retailer. So I do, adopting this, I don't think is going to create a rush of people that suddenly, you know, approach us. But we do have outlets for them to direct them as where to go.
To be clear, this has nothing to do with regulations of the type of firearms that can be sold. We're not instituting bans on certain types of weapons and getting into Second Amendment issues. This relates to firearms generally and we leave it up to the state or higher powers to figure out what's allowed and not allowed for gun sales.
And my point of view is, we went from not allowing it anywhere to allowing it in many different places. So, you know, for representing the firearms retailer, I think we're creating a lot of opportunities that aren't there right now.
Okay, that's a good answer.
Commissioner Scales?
I just have one question. Is it fair to say that the M district then would just be like wholesalers? Like someone's manufacturing for wholesale or they wouldn't have a retail outlet, would they?
They could have a retail outlet. I mean, the M district has some interesting uses in there, from tattoo parlors to adult entertainment to cannabis uses.
Cannabis retailers are allowed to be there.
Okay, fair enough.
Group pub type uses, you know. So it's kind of more diverse than just manufacturing, processing, warehousing.
Kind of like a hip zoning.
And I believe that because it's a special use, then you can look at it on a location-by-location basis and you can say, oh, this doesn't seem smart in this location, or it does seem smart. So I think on a location-by-location examination of, is it appropriate? That's where it's appropriate to say, well, there's no parking lot, but you're introducing a retail use, you know, because it was manufacturing. And I think the special use process is what gives us that ability to examine it.
Yeah, sounds good. No, good work on this.
Do you like to spend your time in the M district?
I love the M district.
I'm just saying about pairing up a few of those uses.
Okay, any further discussion? In which case, Chair would accept motion to approve PCC 0162022, request from the village of Westmont, zoning ordinance text amendments to define and provide zoning regulations and prohibitions for firearm sales in various zoning districts.
Motion Clemmons?
Motion Clemmons?
Second. Thomas.
Second, Thomas. Discussion on the motion seeing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. We have nothing under miscellaneous items. Does anyone have updates or comments before we, I call for a motion to dismiss?
I just want to thank Allison and Tom for their service. It's been a pleasure serving with you.
I feel sad.
Indeed.
I'd like to make two quick comments. First, a meeting, I think, is scheduled for May eleventh. Right now, we have one site and landscape approval. I think we'll all be excited. It should be for that vacant lot at Sixty-third and Cass for the, next to Raising Cane's. So we finally have some development happening there. And then from the bottom of our hearts, staff, both of you have been a pleasure to work with. I don't think, although it was acknowledged by the mayor, I don't think people realize the time and effort it takes outside of this meeting, which can be lengthy at times as well, that it takes to digest all the information that staff throws at you, which is sometimes very technical. Sometimes you're getting pulled and people are talking in your ears about, because you are residents of the village and they have opinions as well. And you try to stay analytical and not get, you know, passionate one way or another. And you formulate your own decisions of what right and wrong are, which is what we appreciate from all our commissioners. So staff thanks you for being so amenable all these years. We appreciate it.
I would like to also thank Commissioner Sharp and Commissioner Clemmons for your service. And it's been a pleasure working with you and good luck. The other thing I would like to say is that the, maybe you should update us on what happened with the golf course development at the village board. So we're going to know what happened there.
I absolutely can do that. So it was heard here and two of the three received positive recommendations. The third was that comp plan amendment received a negative recommendation. So as we discussed at the time, the applicant had several options. One was to go retool the project and bring it back before the planning and zoning to try to appease planning and zoning and get three positive recommendations. Or move it strictly to the board and with that negative recommendation on the one item and try to persuade the village board to see it differently. What happened was, is that at last minute, so it was scheduled for the village board last week or two weeks ago, maybe it was last week.
Last week.
And they decided at the last moment to ask for a continuance or postponement. Because I think at that point, there's always been discussion of a conservation easement on the front nine. I think that there was some realization that there might be some opposition to the request. I think that there was some realization that there might be some opposition to the request, based on the fact that it wasn't solidified very well. So they wanted to take some time to try to solidify some terms of that conservation easement, and then re-approach and make the request to the board at the time. And although at the time, I think, they were thinking it could get to the next board meeting, we left it open-ended, because I think they have some work to do to get that agreement in place.
But since then, they have shared a draft for the conservation easement, and the, I think it's the residences of Oak Brook Hills who have an attorney, and the developer and the Park District are all getting their eyes on this, and trying to fine-tune it to a point where it's acceptable to everyone. The village will get its eyes on it as well, and the developer hopes to come in and say, we have a finalized conservation easement that the owner is voluntarily willing to record against title to the front nine, and hope that helps sell the comp plan amendment.
So they're moving in the direction of having the Park District manage?
I'm not sure. I don't believe the Park District would have any management responsibilities, but may have enforcement responsibilities if the terms of the conservation easement are violated. And they may have a default manage, at least an option to manage it, if the hotel owner says, I don't wanna deal with this anymore. But at the very least, it can be passive, open space, if it's not a golf course, still owned by the hotel, as long as, you know, it meets the limitations of the conservation easement.
Excellent, thank you. Chair would accept a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.